Seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. I'm Grace Luesbrunz, Cascade Supervisor. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Luesbrunz.
Here.
Treasurer Corstang.
Here.
Trustee Kessel.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
Clerks Slater are here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Athletes to the ladder of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands on mission under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion or discussion for approval of tonight's agenda?
Shipley makes a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nordhook to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article four, presentations, we have one this evening. I believe Mr. Jeff Carpenter is here on behalf of the Thornapple River Special Assessment District Subcommittee. He'll give us an overview of their activities over the past year. He and other members of the committee who, at least some are here tonight, have worked very hard to preserve and maintain our Thornapple River resource. So, Mr. Carpenter, thank you for coming. The floor is yours.
Thank you Supervisor Luesbrunz. All right, just a quick introduction, Jeff Carpenter, 5016 Sequoia Drive. And I am definitely on the ad hoc committee. I'd also like to thank the other committee members and also indicate that, you know, I'm speaking on the request of the committee. They nominated me to be here this evening, but I'm speaking for the whole group. We have Mike Wiegand, Charles Whitley, who I saw in the audience, Tom Keith, Scott Rissy, Leanne Rowland, and then last but not least, trustee Shipley is the board representative. Also like to thank Jessica Stein. Jessica is providing administrative support for our committee, which I think sometimes the speed at which we talk in our meetings, I'm surprised she can get all the information down. So trustee Shipley can vouch for that. So she's been very helpful in both our online presence as well as in person. So just a brief background, some of you, well, maybe all of you know the history of this, but you know, when this ad hoc committee that essentially advises you as the Board of Trustees was formed in late 2021, I don't think that we would have realized that since then, we would have met 17 times. So very active committee, 17 meetings since December of 2021. We've had three different township staff advising us. You know, we've had the former manager, we have the current manager, we have Parks and Rec Director Manion, sort of really tag teaming that. So we've gone through some pivoting as well, but I think we're a pretty agile group of people and we've been able to absorb that very easily. But just to point out that we have had different leadership, but we've tried to create continuity. Over that time, the committee itself, the members of the public essentially has not changed. So really our liaison to the township is what has changed. Later on in your agenda, you'll see that we actually have an annual report. I'll call your attention to page six in your packet, if you have it electronically or in paper. There's a multi-page annual report. This is something new. As part of the SAD, when it was established, a special assessment district, there's a single line sort of in that establishing clause that says we will report out on an annual basis. Under the leadership of manager Smith, we have actually done that this year in a visual form. So you have a multi-page report that was written and edited by the group collectively. And then I think it also meets the standard that you're trying to achieve for some of your reports for the different ad hoc committees. There's a little bit of a template that we're trying to follow. So I think that's a great thing. That's published online as well. The name of the game is transparency for this particular group. Those 17 meetings that we've had, they've all been public meetings. We've had some public attend, sometimes it was just us. But we have, we don't meet outside of that venue per the statute. So just wanted to make sure that you knew that that report is in alignment with, I think, the way that manager Smith is moving with the committees writ large. The next thing I'll draw your attention to is page 64 in your packet. And if you bear with me, I have to switch my screen here on my tablet, scroll down. So on the, the primary reason I'm here tonight and, and I'll, is really to go over a proposal as one of our projects from a marine contractor Viking Marine Construction. The details are in there. And before I do that, I just wanted to say that we have really stuck to what the original special assessment district was supposed to do, right? It was supposed to work on preserving and protecting the Thornapple River, at least from the Cascade Dam to 60th Street where Cascade is, is, has jurisdiction through various maintenance activities. And those are things that in the past, you know, up until just a few years ago, were really done voluntarily by voluntary donations. And that just wasn't keeping up with what we needed to do. So in those, and, and I'm not going to read the entire report that you'll see on page six. That's for you to do, I suppose, either prior to this meeting or later, but I'll just call out attention to a couple of the key things that we felt we've been able to accomplish pretty quickly, right? So we established an aquatic vegetation control program. So that's two-pronged. One, that's going after invasive species with chemical treatment. And then it's going after native species with mechanical harvesting. Those are two very different things. We've retained the services of PLM, which is a Western Michigan Lake and Land Management Company. We're entering year three of that agreement with them. It is a three-year agreement. So one of the things we'll be working on is whether we want to extend that or rebid it. That was a competitive bidding process that they won. But they've been doing chemical treatment of invasives and they're making progress. It takes time. It doesn't happen, snap your fingers and they don't go away, right? And then we've done some mechanical harvesting in the very southern edge of the river where the township jurisdiction is still around 60th Street. That's where we have a lot of native weeds that are essentially choking off the ability to even use the river, even in a kayak. And so we've done some harvesting there with mixed success, but we were working with the company on that. You know, one of the other things that, that we really wanted to focus on was communicating and making sure we had a presence. So we've established a good website. We have a lot of good information on there. We have these public meetings. And then one of the second things we've done, and that's what I'm here primarily to talk about, is this contract that I'll get to in a moment. The third thing, I think these are more of the long-term, we'll say three to five years. Recall, this is a 15-year special assessment district and we're in year three, right? And so what we want to do is we want to start, and we've talked to manager Smith about this and Director Manion, about really focusing on medium to long-term planning, right? It's one of the things that I do professionally. And so I'm saying, maybe we could talk about three to five-year planning so that we can ensure that we're not only dealing with things like immediate maintenance, moving logs out of the way that might be into safety navigation channel issue, dealing with weeds and things like that. But what are we doing in that three to five-year span? And then looking even out, maybe even 10 years? So there are other things that we talked about in our original special assessment district. I'm not going to speak about that right now because it's really up to the committee to work on, but we talked about the idea of a simple strategic plan, not something overly complex, perhaps in alignment with what else is being done in the township for other committees and groups to really set that stage forward so people understand what their money is going towards, right? It's not just in the moment, dealing with the weeds in July, but there's a multi-year approach to it. So that when we come up to that 15-year time and the board has to decide whether to renew it, that we've been prudent and we've done a good job. So I think that's one of the things we'll be focusing on in the next year or two is really that medium to long-term strategic planning. But the primary reason I'm here and the last thing I'll talk about, and then obviously take any questions, starts on page 64 in your packet. One of the things that we focused on was safety of the river, right? So the river in this context again is stretching from the Cascade Dam south to 60th Street. So sometimes it feels like you're going upriver, you're going north, you're actually going south. So you're going, and it gets narrower as you go. And we have two things that we're concerned with as a committee and as the residents that we're representing. Safety and then safe navigation. And those are really two distinct things. And so what we did is we retained the services of a third-party consultant. We have paid for that. That's a company called Peterson and Vandenberg Environmental. They're out of Nunica, Michigan, and they specialize in a variety of assessments and also making sure that we're in alignment with state regulations and federal regulations and everything that applies. So we retain them as a consultant as a phase one project. So we didn't want to just commit a ton of money to this. We wanted to find out what can we do? And so we worked with them and we identified two different categories of buoys. So buoys being, they're in your packet, there's a few photos of them. These are, you know, 30 to 40 inch tall plastic buoys, like you might see in any navigational waterway throughout Michigan, right? And we identified safety and navigation. Those are two different things. Safety, these are kind of like an orange buoy that says danger. And the reason for that is it's marking objects that are under the water that you can't see, right? This could be a stump. In some cases, we actually have house foundations that are under the water that predate the dam back in the 1920s. And so we identified four locations to put a safety marker to, to mark something under the water. And that's, that's pretty prudent. Then we identified 15 navigational buoys. Now, these are, if you boat in Michigan, you know, red right returning. If you're returning to port, you keep the buoy that's red on your right. So in that case, if you're headed south, the buoy is on your right. So we're going to put a variety in this proposal of red and green buoys to mark some key channels on the river. Now, one thing to consider is aesthetics, because you have to balance safety and navigation with aesthetics. The river is a beautiful thing to look at. We don't want to see buoys all over the place. That was not the intention. So we very narrowly chose some areas that are in the least populated sections of the river, which happened to be the most difficult to navigate. And they're in your packet. There are, they're mainly between the highway and the train bridge, which for those of you know, that's the airplane landing path for east-west. And it's also where the golf course is, not a lot of residential area. There is a street in there, little harbor. And we worked with, we have, we have a representative on our committee that lives on that street and that feels confident about this proposal. So we have a variety of navigational buoys. And it's important to note that these are not just placed willy-nilly. They're not just random, right? So we did depth surveys, professionally done, to identify the appropriate location. We also made sure that they conform to the state uniform waterway marking system. So the state through the DNR has an appropriate methodology you have to follow. That consultant helped us do that. We also applied for and received permits from the state. Those permits are good for five years and they cover all the locations proposed. So the state of Michigan has signed off on the proposal. And then finally, in some locations, these buoys have to, are in front of residences that require permission. In most cases, the actual bottom land is controlled by the township. So the township can give permission. But in a couple of cases, the residents is actually, the people that own the property had to give permission. We have obtained that permission and that lives with the property. So if that person moves, it goes with the property forever in perpetuity. And we have received written permission from those people in compliance with state regulation. So in summary, what we are asking the board to approve, and the reason why I'm really talking to is because it's more than $25,000. So it's in the $40,000 to $50,000 range. We're asking for the board to support the placement of these navigational and safety buoys, 19 of them, that are state-approved, third-party consultant-approved, and ad hoc committee-approved by a well-representing group of, of homeowners. And we would like that approval this evening so that we can go forth with purchase orders and hopefully commence construction this calendar year. It's a very challenging environment. There aren't very many companies that do this kind of work and they typically schedule years in advance. We have an opportunity to do this this summer before next winter, if we have your approval this evening. So that's kind of the, one of the major projects we have going. And then obviously I talked earlier about moving on into the future and more strategic type plan. So appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. If there's any questions that anybody has, and then obviously trustee Shipley can, can weigh in as your representative as well. So any questions?
Jeff, is there any use for the other assess, assessment dollars this year besides the buoys?
The weed control program, because we're in year three, we are actually contractually committed to that. So we'll be using the weed control dollars, this portion of money, and then we have a portion in reserve in case of debris emergencies. We actually have an open contract with a company called Larry's Tree Service. They actually have a barge with a crane. We use them once already. They can move things out of the channel and that costs a lot. That's about $5,000 a day. So between the reserve for that, the weed control, and then this request, that's, that's eating up the majority of it for this year. We do have some in reserve from previous years and we're working with the township on budgeting and making sure, but we definitely have other plans, yes. It's an excellent, thank you trustee Kessel.
I had a question about the permits.
Yes.
Those are from the state of Michigan.
Yes.
For five years.
Yes, what, what happens is, is that Peterson and Vandenberg Environmental, what they advise us, we actually applied for permits for more than the 17 locations. We, we actually applied for almost double that. You provide geolocated maps to the state and you say, these are all the potential locations that you would like to use. They then approve those and we were, we actually received approval on all of them. And then you have five years to implement. And you have to, you have to place it based on that actual coordinate in the permit. And so we then scaled back because we didn't really want all those locations. But that permit, if, if we were not to act in five years, we would have to reapply. That's about a six-month process to apply for the permit.
And that's forever.
Yes. I'm sorry, when you say forever, clarify that.
Once you have the permit, you have the permit. That's not something you have to renew.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. It's actually, it's a permit for construction of the buoy in that location.
Okay.
Once it's there, it's then established. The issue would be if you did not implement in that location in five years, you'd have to reapply. And it took us about five and a half months to get through that process and it wasn't free.
Thank you.
So thanks for that clarifying question. Anybody else have any other questions for me? I'm speaking on behalf of the group, so.
Financially, the information, are you getting it? I know for the first year or two, there was some issues, just basic math.
No, absolutely. No, thank you Supervisor Luesbrunz. I, I would say yes. What, you know, what I've seen implemented and I'm observing things, you know, outside of just my committee, I monitor what's going on, right? I'm a resident here. And what I've seen manager Smith do and, and, and the treasurer and others is, I mean, there's a standardized format now, right? And every time we have a meeting, we're getting that included in our packet. And, and we've, we've moved to an every other month now, that those 17 meetings that we had over to little, little owners. But no, I, I feel like it's, it's adequate.
Okay.
I mean, it's simple. And I think we have to layer our budgeting on top of that because it's in the standard sort of accounting speak. But that was the key, is that really to even see that fundamental, what's going in, what's going out. No, I feel confident in it. I, I think I'm speaking for the rest of our group. And, you know, we have, by the way Supervisor Luesbrunz, on our committee, I mean, we have administrative people. We have people that have corporate finance background, CPA. We have two engineers. We have people that are paying attention and I think if something was different, we'd let you know.
Okay, good. Thank you.
It's a great question, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions for me? Otherwise, I'll wrap up and I'll hope to see your support later on in your agenda for this project. And we look forward to bringing more in the future over the next 12 years.
Appreciate all you guys have done on behalf of the river.
Okay.
All the residents.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Next, public comments. So anything on the agenda that is not scheduled for a public hearing? Now would be the time to comment on the fire millage renewal that would be coming up this, later on this year. Repair over at a bridge on the pathway on Butrick Avenue. A daycare construction near Watermark. And also, as Mr. Carpenter mentioned, the Thornapple River Special Assessment District. Also appointments to the Village Design Review Committee. So anyone wishing to comment on any of those agenda items, now is the time. And then for those wishing you to come, wishing to comment on anything else, we'll have time for that at the end of the meeting. Good evening, Mr. Whitley, welcome.
Thank you. Charles Whitley, 5030 Sequoia Drive, Southeast. And I'm, for full disclosure, I am vice president of the Cascade Thormal River Association. I'm on the, the SAD board and I'm a retired engineer. So I'm not representing those first two categories with my comments here. And because the package and stuff, you know, every, all the facts and stuff were in there. They're great, really loved it. I really hung up on something on page 65, where there was the item that said strategic plans slash goals. And it was preserve, protect, and maintain the Thornapple River and Cascade Dam. So when I first was reading this over, it's like, okay, this is from the, the prospect or the perspective of, you know, the wanting to spend this money and does it meet, you know, the, the charter of the SAD? And then it's like, oh no, it's really, you know, the township charter. And so I'm looking at it and it's like, okay, preserve, protect, and maintain the Thornapple River. And I'm, I was at a loss as to, you know, what activities and what budgeting you have for that kind of activity on your side as opposed to, you know, allowing our, you know, sad stuff to go forward. You know, because we need, as the, the agenda shows, we need the approval for that. So the, the question was, you know, what's, what skin does the township have in the game for this goal of preserve, protect, and maintain the Thornapple River? You know, what has the township spent in the last 10 years? What do they expect to spend in the next 10 years? So it's kind of, you know, it just kind of struck me as being, you know, out of place here in that I, I don't see that sad people spending money for something. Number one, should have to align with a township goal. You know, it should align to a sad goal. And given that the township says they have a goal, what is, what resources are they putting towards it? You know, and, and what's, what's the plan to support this goal, you know, going forward? So that's my concern. So the packet, everything there, you know, all technically stuff, perfectly good, you know, support that definitely. But this is just a question is, you know, what are you doing as putting skin in the game as far as the stated goal of preserve, protect, and maintain the Thornapple River? You know, what's the township doing, not what the SAD is doing?
It's a pretty broad question, but we could hit on some of the high points later on during board comments. Thank you.
Hello, Scott Insalkma. I'm here to just talk about the bridge repair. I know it said that it was struck by a vehicle and I looked through the packet. I didn't see anything. Is the township doing anything or the insurance company to go after the driver and/or their insurance company? I, you know, the bridge was in perfect working condition before someone crashed into it. You know, I just think that their insurance should pay for it, not ours. Also is, with this repair, would the township or county perhaps do anything to put anything else up there, maybe like a cable barrier or any type of a guard rail or anything like that, so that it doesn't happen again? I don't know if anyone had thought about that, but just something to perhaps think about while they're doing the work, construction or whatever, just, you know, to prevent it from happening again. So just a thought. And I am in support of the fire millage. I think that's a good idea to obviously keep that funded. Obviously, they do provide a valuable service, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments in person or virtually? Mr. Baumann, welcome.
How are you doing? Yeah, I'm Mel Baumann, commander of the Kent County United Veterans Council. And I'm here to invite the township to the Memorial Day Parade. In the past, it's always been pretty much organizations within the city. And at one of our meetings, it dawned on me that we are the County United Veterans Council, not the City United Veterans Council. So anyway, we're going out to talk to all the municipalities and invite them to take part in the parade if you want to. Strictly voluntary, you will not be punished if you don't. John has copies of these flyers. But anyway, the parade's on the 25th of May. Lineup is at 9:30 in the morning on Lion Street between Monroe and Division. The parade will kick off at 10:00 and then it'll be followed up with the ceremony in Veterans Park. So it should be, should be different. We're doing it a little different this year. And then part of that is we started an essay contest in the schools. And so the kids can write an essay on what Memorial Day means to them. We'll grade the essays and the winner will get a $250 gift card. And so for, for a high school kid, that's a pretty good piece of change. So anyway, so that's going on and John has a copy of that flyer as well. So you are invited to participate in the parade if you want to. Have a, have a fire engine in it if you want to. Grand Rapids usually has a couple. And, and we just talked to Caledonia, I think, last week. So anyway, we're inviting all the municipalities. If they want to participate, they certainly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Article six, approval of the consent agenda. Is there discussion or a motion?
Shipley makes motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Financial actions, discussion or a motion to request, regarding the request for invoices to be paid on April 11th?
Motion to approve.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no unfinished business, next item, article nine, new business. First, item 028, 2024, consider a resolution to approve the fire millage language. Manager Smith, I know we've got multiple people here, but I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you Supervisor. So what's before you tonight is a result of the work session that we had on March 27th, where the millage language was presented to you, some different options and methodology that we've worked on as staff to find the right millage number. Just to review from a high level in regards to what was discussed that evening, we did talk about taking this millage and adding it to the August ballot. So we have some time to educate the public. And actually, let me, let me start back by saying that there's been a lot of work done on this. And when we start talking about the millage, I guess the biggest question is the need for it and why we are talking about that. We are looking at forecasting expenses and revenues out 20 years. And when we did that, it was very evident that the fire department will be running in a deficit in a couple of years. In 2025, we will actually be dipping into the fund balance that they actually currently have to the tune of almost a million dollars a year.
Of next year.
Correct, correct. And then that fund balance would be depleted. And it's really hard to say when that would actually happen because it would all depend on expenses and revenues. And actually, if the millage does pass, we could have to make some operational changes. But the, the idea that we're having to dip into the, the fund balance with the expiration of the millage, that's an equation for not a sustainable department or a not sustainable budget. So what we talked about on the 27th was putting this on the August ballot. The one thing that needs to be decided tonight is not only the language, but the term. We discussed 10 years and 20 years. We do have another fire millage that's due to expire in 2027. I know that it is the desire of this current board to not assess, if this millage goes through this year, is to not assess the millage for the next couple of years of that, for that 2027 millage. We were going to include that in the language tonight, but as we worked with our legal counsel, this board can't really make a decision for a previous board. And with an election this year, there could be a change in the makeup of the board. So we can't actually put that in the millage because the next board could decide to actually assess that millage. And I'll talk more about how we'll educate the, the public and, and discuss that. But it just officially can't go in the language. We also have another millage that expires in 2033. So the idea is to either have this millage expire the same year as that or 10 years later, so you have a rotating millage. I just want to make sure I cover all my pieces here. After the decisions made to approve the millage language and the millage is actually set, which we are proposing 1.37 mills to, and just to make sure everybody's clear, existing millage is 0.57. Laura, you're going to need to correct me if I'm wrong. And also that would take care of not assessing the 2027 millage. So that 1.37 does look like a, an increase over the current. It's not, you can't just renew it. It is an increase, but that, the intent is not to assess the 27 millage and also make sure that we're set up financially for the next 20 years based upon the very conservative projections that we did do. If and when it gets approved, well, when the millage language gets approved, the staff will be putting together an education piece to make sure that we can educate the public on what the proper millage number is, why we're here, how we got here, and then make sure that we can answer any questions from, from the public. We will intend to do this in various ways. We'll do it online, it'll be in print, it'll be on social media. We'll do videos and obviously there'll be some in-person education done as well. So with that being said, that's a real high overview that we have presented to you tonight based upon the detail that was given to you two weeks ago. And I, the chief is here along with the finance director. So if there's any specific questions in regards to possible the need, how we ended up here from the need of the fire department to finances, they're here to answer questions as well and as, as am I. But that's a real high, high-level overview.
So Jade, the point, 1.37 mills.
So Jade, uh, the point, 1.37 mills uh, includes the millage that expired. Plus it includes the, uh, what is assessed in the 27, uh, the millage that's due in 2027 also.
Yes.
So what we're doing is we're collecting for a millage that just expired last year. And then the millage, the 1.37 mills includes the millage that's already on the records that expires in 2027. Just I, I, I said that right, right?
Correct.
Okay. So.
Do you want to go back for just a second? What this, what we inherited, we as in the current board? How many millages, including shadow millages right now? What's the situation with funding our fire department right now in Cascade Township? What are the sort, if you don't mind, Lorna, could you give us a?
Of course supervisor. Test, test. Sound great. Currently, the fire department is funded by four main methods. One is a millage that expires in 2027. That is point two, one, five, seven mills. And that raises about half a million dollars a year, just shy of half a million. There is a millage that expires in 2033 and that is point zero, I'm sorry, zero point five, zero, one, three. So about half a mill. All these mills go out for, four digits. That half a mill raises a little over a million dollars a year. The millage that expired that Jade said is a point five, seven mill. That's a point five, seven, two, four. And that's gone, uh, as of this year, and that did raise 1.2 million. And then, uh, you had mentioned a shadow mill. That is, uh, the general fund contributes to the fire fund in, uh, in the amount of $400,000 a year. And that equates to an additional point one, nine, zero, five mills. So currently the fire department is being supported by a total of 1.4799 mills.
What are your thoughts as a financial director we hired this year, based on your expertise about, um, having four different sources of funding for a millage or for, sorry, for the fire station?
Uh, managing one department with four different revenue streams with four different legal restrictions can be tough such that one of the mills does not mention, uh, emergency medical response. And now it does mention a fire department. So I guess you could split hairs and, and talk about, well, is the role of a fire department expected for emergency, uh, medical or not? Yet another one of our mills does specifically mention EMS services and specifically mentions two fire stations and their locations. So if, if, uh, it's, it's a little tough. I'd never want to get into an area that, uh, we think we have a large pot of money to administer the department and turns out that there are very legal restrictions in one piece of the dollars. Just makes it very tough to, to operate cohesively.
Not sure what under the prior board and prior personal finance committee was, but I know this board and this personal finance committee is really concerned with cleaning things up and making it a lot easier. Should be a lot more straightforward. And that was treasurer Kostaj then who initiated and also trustee Norduk combining the, um, the two millages. Transparently doing it this year versus the old strategy of kind of kicking the can and last ditch money grabs. So the goal would be educating everybody on the strategy.
I guess my question is, what's the best case scenario, whether it's 10 or 20?
We say 10 or were we talking about nine or 20?
10 and 20. Cause I'm like, I thought we discussed nine and
Cause either way, the 27, the 27 is getting, under this current board is getting eaten up by whatever we're gonna, we're gonna combine them with this current millage on the ballot in August. So yeah, nine or 20.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yep. The difference between the nine and the 10 years uh, is semantics, but not practical. And that if you look at just years and say, we want a millage to expire in 2033 and we're in 2024. Well, there's a nine-year difference. That's a nine-year mill. Well, we will, if this mill, uh, were to go through, we would levy it at the end of 2024. And if you count on fingers and, and thumbs, uh, you go 20, you'd levy at the end of 24 to cover 25 operations. Then you'd levy it in 25, 26, 27, 28, all the way through. And by the time you'd levy it last in 2033, that comes up to 10 years of levies, 10 levies, but in nine physical calendar year. So I apologize that, uh, legal did a great job of catching that and, uh, pointing out.
But 10 versus 20. Not nine, 10, but 10 versus 20. What's the best scenario? Is 20 the cleanest or is 10 the cleanest? From what Grace is asking.
From my perspective, there's two ways to, if you approve the 10-year millage, you would then end up in 2033 with both millages. This one, if it's approved, and then the one that's currently existing, they both would expire the same year. So then you would be going back out for, and I don't know, legal will have to jump in. I don't know if you go out for two renewals or if you can combine the renewals, but that's for 10 years to worry about down the road. The other idea is that you have one that expires 10 years from now, and then you have another one that expires 20 years from then. So you have two shots to keep the millage
Rolling.
So there are advantages to both. For the, the sake of the taxpayers. I mean, I like to get my tax bill with, with just one millage, but I can't say that that's, that's the right or the wrong way to go. And I don't like i- in 10 years, would they both go on as renewals or?
Yeah, they probably would. You, you could, well, talking about the 20-year first and then combine them, right? For a renewal at that time, you could do that. And then same with the 10-year, sorry, the 10-year rather than the 20, cause then you'd have two tins, right?
Right.
So the, the 10-year one, at the time that expired, then you could combine them and just do a new one. I think you could still turn it over.
I, I do want to get some information from Chief at some point too, but just historically. Trustee Castle, is there a reason why we ended up with all of these, which seem like Band-Aid millages that all expired random years?
It wasn't around for all of them. The one we did for the, uh,
Been here since 2004.
Yeah, that was, the millage wasn't after I got elected.
So you've been here for two on top of that.
Plus the $400,000 transfer to Shadow Village.
So I just want to know why we, where we got to the point that we
We had a, we had a need for a new fire station.
Not this one. That's not what this is.
I, you don't let me finish.
Sorry. I just want to make sure that the facts are
Fire station out on Buttrick. And that's why the one knowledge was passed. Because we had, we didn't have a millage set up for that fire station.
How old is that fire station?
Built in 1996 and operated in 2004.
So, so you, okay. So that's the one you said you weren't here for. So that's that one. That one was put in apparently for the fire station. Now we've had two Band-Aid millages since then. I'm wondering what those were put in for.
I don't remember exactly what each of the fire villages were for. Part of them were operating because one had run out. And the, um, one was in 24 or 14 for 20 years. And one was in, um, do you remember when the other one was?
But why not do what we're doing right now? When you, those come up for renewal, take the opportunity to consolidate, you know, other ones that may not be up that year. So that we're not just kicking the can with like three and a half.
That's history. I think what we want to do now.
I know, but we have to convince the voters that we're responsibly handling the, the funds. So one, if I was a resident, my question would be, are, is it worth it? Do we need this additional millage? Are we, is our township leadership handling the funding that we already pay before I pay for an additional millage? And up until four years ago, I don't, I wouldn't have seen it, but I just want to show that we're not doing things the same way. So I guess that's the before and after, I think is important. For such an important thing as the fire millage.
So good.
If I can add two cents worth here. Being on the fire department for almost 30 years. Traditionally, the township in its growing state tried to take it easy on the taxpayers and the residents as you and I both are. So one of the millages was to establish forestation number two, which was a shell. And that provided shelter for two fire trucks, three, if you count the brush truck. And that's it. That fire station was manned strictly by paid-on-call firefighters. Back then known as volunteers. And then we got into position where we identified that we needed more full-time personnel. That millage did not cover all the expenses for full-time personnel and upgrading the station as was brought up with living quarters for 24/7. So nickel and diming, yes, we put a lot of Band-Aids on the fire department over the years. It should be noted that doing that, it created a lot of controversy. Why are we paying three millages for a fire department expiring at different times? That's because as a department grew from total volunteers, non-paid status to CETA employees, that's where our first four employees came from. Federal government paid for them for eight hours a day. Who also took care of the parks to requiring full-time trained staff at both stations to be able to respond to your residents within four minutes of a call. That's quite a challenge when you're on the other side of township. So the township board at the time under the, uh, guidance of the chief at the time, chiefs, there were several of them, uh, requested the millages and that's why we have Band-Aid millages. And it should be noted that as we grew, we are the only fire department in the area that responds to all your medical calls, whether they're med one, which means, oh, I got a tummy ache. Or I'm sorry, a med three, which means I got a tummy ache to med one, which means hey, my, my son's not breathing anymore. Get over here. So that's what the Band-Aid millages did as a township and the residents grew. They had to grow also. Any other questions?
I, I want to point out something, a couple of things. I'm not going to argue with what you said, but I want people to understand moving forward. We have a finance director and a manager that has put together projections for us. We are not looking at, oh no, we need another person or oh no, we need this. We are looking at projections the best that we can with chief's input to look at what the anticipated needs within the township are the next 10 years. And I think that that's an important thing to talk about. I know you, what you said is a lot, but I want people to not confuse that with what we're looking at now, which is looking at projections out at least for the next 10 years. The anticipated needs within the township so that we're not coming back in five years and hopefully asking for another millage.
That's, I think that's the point. We're not going to randomly having three millages plus a shadow millage. That's just a piecemeal sloppy situation is what we don't want.
People to understand that I know there was not anybody at the work session, which was a little sad a couple of weeks ago. But we've had projections out. We've looked through, that we talked through. The chief went over, Lorna went over and Jade went over. And I think it's really important for people to understand that it, it feels like this time around, we're really trying to do the best we can to look out 10 years. And I think that that's where, when we talk about these overlapping millages between doing two 20-year millages that overlap, it gives us the opportunity to be able to come back in 10 years when that millage is expiring. Look at again at 10 years projections. Nobody knows what's going to happen in the next 10 years. The last 10 years cost, I mean, you could give us how many times they've multiplied. It's tremendous because of those things that have happened in the last 10 years. Nobody could have anticipated that previously. But I think that it's important to know that we are looking the best we can out to the future to anticipate the things that we can, including some capital improvements, things like that. To make this millage last for the next 10 years at a minimum, when we would come back, when the next one would expire. To look again at the projections. And I think that that's the key that, that the residents need to understand. Is that we are truly trying to look responsibly out to the future.
And, and as the treasurer, uh, pointed out too, things change. For instance, our surrounding, uh, communities, we have mutual aid agreements with all of them. That's why your fire chief keeps refusing to buy a ladder truck because he's got three of them surrounding the township. So why should we spend what $3 million for new ladder truck? Which requires manning by at least five firefighters, you know, no need for it. So it is, as the treasurer pointed out, responsible, uh, request to sustain the fire department and the services that they provide to the community.
So, so the bottom line is, and I think Wendy, you really pointed out, with the 10-year one, we kind of clean up everything, right? And make it all so, so they're going to align.
It'd be two steps.
Yep. But, but, because the, the, the key thing that people aren't going to understand, especially with the millage language, and I don't know how we would, would change this. That would be something for, for Mike to do. We've got 1.4799 mills today, correct? Is what we're really capturing. And then this says a new millage of 1.37, but it's really not adding 1.37 on top of the 1.4799. That's what people won't understand. What it's doing is taking that point two, one, five, seven for 2027. And the point five, seven, two, four that expires this year in the general fund and consolidating them, that 1.37 consolidates them to get us at basically the same of what residents are paying today to 2033. And then we'd have to ask for a new millage then. Maybe it's 1.5, maybe it's 1.3. We don't know right now, but this is to align all those, a 10-year will align all those different millages. If we get the 1.37 right now, it's just hard to explain that in the ballot language that we're really collecting 1.4799. We're asking for 1.37, um, but eliminating these other ones. And that's really what's happening. Effectively, we eliminate two of the millages and the general fund. Is that correct?
But the general fund is still paying the bond payment for it. Right. That's, I want people
Right. But that's the difference. That's, that's not
No, but that's part of the the fire station.
Part of the cost.
Yes. And, and I think I was not on the board at that time, but you guys were very adamant to make sure the new fire station was not put on too.
Right. Manager Smith, can you talk to the, this renewal is an operation of village that is not, we're not using it to pay off the new fire station.
Oh, correct. Yes. So right now the debt service on the fire station since the, I don't even know if the bond payments have started to happen because it's so new. But all of the debt service for the new fire station is being paid out of general fund. It is not coming out of the fire millage fund. And that's very clear. And that's will be also explained in the fact, the FAQ sheets that we put together. You know, it's, it's very evident and transparent in our budget on an annual basis.
So fire station one was funded, correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially one savings, knowing this was, this was coming up. So past savings, two, uh, ARPA funding, meaning some of the COVID money that trickled down and then three bonding out for it. But essentially that bonding out is paid for by, um, 2020 census, the census showed a population increase, which then increased how much revenue the state shares with the township. Based on our increase of population, our revenue sharing increased. That we pay for that bond based on that, um, increase in revenue. So it's not coming out of actual tax.
It's not coming out of the existing tax base that was being paid previously with your 2020 census. Your population went up, so your state shared revenue went up from the state. So that difference in what you received or it has committed to paying for the debt service on the fire station.
Yes.
So no new debt was incurred on the general fund per se. You know, it's a slippery slope when you start talking this way, because it all goes into the general fund, but that difference is actually what's covering your debt service.
And the new fire station one is not, this, this renewal, an operation renewal for the fire department is, is nothing to do with the construction, the cost of our
Zero. And, and just to
Bad timing.
Yeah, clearly. And, and just to, um, maybe clear up a little bit of what, um, trustee McDonald was trying to say. So yes, the current mills is 1.4799 that's being assessed. What will be being assessed when you take out the expiration of the one that expired? And then if you do not assess the 2027 and you take out the $400,000 that was being, um, also that, that's the shadow millage. The new millage ends up being 1.8713. So it's actually only an increase to the taxpayer of point 391.
That's, that's the key.
Right. That's, that's, I think that's the number you were, that we were trying to get to. So point 391 is the actual increase, which comes out to about $7.83 a month or $94 a year to the average homeowner. And that's based upon the average home value, which in And that's based upon the average home value, which in Cascade right now is four hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Just crazy.
So there's a calculation for residents that we can back in your specific home value. And we'll put this on our education piece too, where you'll be able to complete that formula with your actual value of your home off of your assessment. And you'll be able to see that that, based on that assessment, that's what your millage would be.
Seems to make sense to me to do the twenty year because then you roll it and you're not coming back in ten years to clean up again. With my opinion. Yeah, we have one where that's going to come back in ten years. We'll have the overlapping, just the two that will overlap versus the three kind of random years. That expires.
Going ten, you don't have any overlapping.
Oh.
Right. You would term it and then start it all from whatever they decide done.
And you have a better handle on expenses and everything at that.
Oh, okay. Which you can also do if you do a twenty year, once the ten, the next one that expires in ten years, you can again, look at ten year projections to do that millage. And then we would never be specifically without one if something were to happen. We would always have these overlapping.
Staggering of ten years.
Yes, we have two twenty year millages every ten years. We would come to vote on one of them to move forward.
So question, so there's going to be, so we have to, if we want to have a fire department, we want to have first responders, we got to renew our millage, right? So our job as the board is to make sure we do it responsibly, but nobody wants to hear from elected politicians talking about public safety. I don't know, when chief did the presentation to this board about how the fire department operates and what services they provide, it was really, really helpful. So I don't know how much I could listen to all night, chief, but I don't know if you want to. You guys are the ones who are really going to sell it to the community, so. Educate, not, we don't have to sell anything, educate.
Yeah, just to clarify a couple of different things too. For anyone that is interested, everything that was discussed at the March twenty seventh work session is on the website underneath the work session packet. So you can see the forecasted Excel spreadsheet that's there, plus some of the information that the chief presented. So there is some information out there on that. And then yes, we will be educating the public on this and what we will be educating them on is where the one point three seven mills will be going and what happens if the one point three seven mills is not approved. And we will be honest in our education in regards to, you know, what could happen operationally.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can just give a, a couple stats and then, and then open it up for questions. And I know you guys usually have some really good questions for me. Since the last, the last millage was established in two thousand and four, it was a twenty year millage. And over that twenty years, we've had a forty seven percent population increase, a hundred and eleven percent increase in emergency calls and a two hundred and eighty percent increase in the cost of a new fire engine. It's really difficult to predict that kind of cost increases or inflation for twenty years. We're really good at analyzing ten years at a time. And so both of your options tonight give us the opportunity to take a look every decade to make sure that we're on pace for, to, to match the growth of the township. So whatever you decide is, is very good from our perspective because we can analyze every ten years and we're very, we're very comfortable with what our predictions are going to be. Based on that, a lot of our predictions are based on your guys' master plan, which right now includes managed growth, which is a good thing. So right now we are the right exact size fire department with staffing, with apparatus, with stations for what you have planned for the next ten years. And then that's a good thing. We can handle all of that. If we have unmanaged growth similar to other, other communities, you're going to need a new fire station down in the southwest portion of the district. You're going to need new staffing, you're going to need new engines. That's a lot of money. And that includes, and that's how you get those millages on the off. In five years, if, if the board changes their mind on their strategic plan, that could really create another millage opportunity. So based on what you guys have decided.
They're doing catch up because basically you're doing catch up because you realize now you have a need and you have to ask for it versus like.
Correct. So some examples of that, you look at like Dutton Township, they had Amazon come in, they had to establish a full time fire department based on one business coming in. You look at City Wyoming, they've doubled their staffing over the last two years. And they're going to have to almost double again if they have these housing projects that are multi-story level on Twenty Eighth Street down the way. So those are some considerations that when these, when these big growth projects come in, it all, you have to manage it with emergency services as well. And so based on your current master plan, we're exactly the right size. The problem is right now, we're just operating at a little bit of a deficit. And so these, these, that millage of one point three seven would clean that up and put us exactly where we need to be for the next ten years.
Well, the current master plan that we inherited, just in the previous board in two thousand and nineteen passed, essentially when I started, the plan was we're going to need a third fire station to, to accommodate all the industrial and commercial and some apartment residential growth that's, we're anticipating that's going to explode on the southeastern portion of the township around the airport near Sixtieth Street as it comes around from Kentwood across Sixtieth Street. Southwest, sorry, southwest, and then it heads into Cascade. So what I was told is, well, we're going to need a fire station three. But the reality is the industrial growth with all the tax abatements and all the tax incentives that are available, they come in. They're not paying property taxes for a long time. So essentially it would be shooting, residents would be footing the bill, covering these, our expenses would go up. The existing tax base would be paying for it and all the, the, the for-profit businesses that moved into Cascade would be essentially getting, you know, their public safety services covered at our taxpayers' expense.
That's correct.
Which is only six percent of our property tax base versus our property tax base and residential in Cascade is seventy two. So our current master plan that was adopted under this previous board in two thousand and nineteen sets us up, not only operating a deficit for what we have right now. We'd be just like Dutton or Gaines Township or Caledonia, meaning you, the lure of business, you jump at this quick growth and now you're playing catch up and you don't even have, like, you're just.
That's correct.
So one, our master plan, we've contained it, we've pulled that back in, we're doing smart growth that actually benefits residents that live here and pay taxes. Not for-profit businesses that are just looking to set up short term.
That's correct. Right now with their, our current plan at a four to five percent increase in emergency calls is what we're projecting right now with your plan, our, our staffing can handle that without any increases.
Okay.
So, so the real bottom line becomes to, to continue to provide the world-class safety and support that we, we get today from, from our, from our fire chief and, and personnel. Do we, how do we fund this? Do we do it with a ten year millage? Which is basically keeping it pretty, very close to what we're doing today. I think you said maybe a ninety four dollar difference Jade said. It translates down to a ninety four dollar increase for a homeowner with an average Cascade homeowner. Do we do that over a ten year period, over a twenty year period? So the question's going to be if we didn't like how this, as John described the history, how we had to piecemeal it.
We didn't have to. That was his operation. It was this previous board that made the defining.
No, and it happens, crisis happened over a course of about twenty to thirty years. And as, as, as John described, as the conditions changed, we had to add revenues. So the point is now we can i- if we, if we do the twenty year one, we're kind of doing the same thing to a board ten or twenty years from now.
No, no.
Well, there's still two.
Chief just said this, he answered your question. He said, whatever we decide today, whether we decide a ten year or a twenty year, either way, we have the opportunity in ten more years to sit back down and look at projections and make a decision at that point in time. And I think he was clear, sorry. You were clear in what you said a few minutes ago, so I don't know why the question is coming back to him again. I don't, I think that people are going to, that's our board decision. And I think that chief and manager Smith have been very clear in saying the length of this is up to the board to make the decision to put forth. As long as in the ten year projections is working well.
And either way, it puts the, it puts the issue up in front in ten year increments. Either way, it doesn't.
Okay, so, so, so if we do the twenty, twenty year, then that's for twenty years though, right?
Correct, but in ten years, we, they, the board at that time and the hopefully you will still be the fire chief at that point.
Plan.
We'll have that opportunity to come back, look at the ten year projections again and put a millage back out to the people at that point to look at those ten years at that point.
Or not, right?
While having funding in place.
Correct, right. If it's a ten year, then it aligns with the other one that's out there, then they would both be accepted or expire the same year. So.
Correct. Right, I understand that, right.
Right. So just while you're here. And one other thing I think that you spoke about a couple of weeks ago that I think was really important for people to understand is the amount of medical calls that you guys go to. I know we talk about the fire department and so many people think that you show up to all the fires, which you do. But I think it's really important to note the medical calls that you guys come to, if you can kind of touch on that. And then also, I think it's really important for residents to understand the timeframe difference between when you or somebody from the fire department shows up to a Med One call and then how much longer it takes for an actual ambulance to show up. Which I think is really important for people to understand the full extent of the services that you provide to this township that are so important.
Yeah, absolutely. So a lot of people think when they see a, a red fire truck in a, in a fire station, it's, it's all the same service. It's not. Cascade Township is one of only a couple municipalities in the entire county that runs all, all medical calls. So we run priority one, priority two, priority three. Basically anytime you call nine one one, you're getting a Cascade Fire Crew within a few minutes. Doesn't matter if you sprain your ankle, if you just need help getting up after you fell, which happens every day. We have an aging population that we take very good care of. A lot of times our private ambulance companies for those med twos and med three priorities are low priority and they get so busy, it's often an hour waits to get an ambulance. And a lot of times those med twos or med threes become med ones because they're, they're laying on the floor for an hour. So we're able, we're able to get there within a few minutes because we're our full time department. So we, we've got our standards of response and, and assess a patient and triage and treat and oftentimes eliminate the need for that ambulance to come, saving our township, our township residents money so that we can, they don't have to have an ambulance come to help them get up. They don't have to wait an hour and make an injury worse. We, we can, we can get there and help. So we're only, again, one of only a couple departments in the entire town, in the entire county that actually provide those services. So we run about twenty five hundred calls a year, making us one of the busiest. But we are well staffed, we're well funded, we're well supported by you guys and the residents. And it's, and honestly, I've worked at a few different departments. This is the absolute best model I've seen. I'd like to be able to keep.
And the flip side of what you just pointed out with calling off an ambulance, you guys can also call an ambulance quicker.
Correct.
So you show up, somebody's short of breath, you show up, it's worse than that, something bad happens. You guys are there also to call an ambulance quicker. So you can upscale that as well to a Med One and get them there a lot quicker. Whereas we might not have that opportunity if it's just even your husband sitting there at home on the phone with nine one one and nobody's there.
That happens all the time. A lot of times people are embarrassed when they call nine one one. And so they'll downplay their ailments and we'll get there and we'll recognize that they're having a heart attack or they're having something serious happening or a stroke and we can upgrade that ambulance to get there within a few minutes and get them transported and treated at a hospital. Whereas it would have been an hour in that golden hour when you have a stroke or a heart attack or whatever it is can, can be life threatening. So we are able to assess a lot better than if, if we wouldn't have that service.
So what I'm hearing is with the twenty year, there's a, a higher comfort level that we can ensure that the residents will have some type of ongoing funding for their safety, for the fire department. With the twenty year gives us a little more flexibility than, than the ten year.
That's my understanding and that's how personally as a resident, that's how I feel comfortable knowing that, you know, as a resident, I know every ten years I'm going to go to the vote on a millage, they're going to be overlapping. We're going to be very transparent when we educate the public on this. And we've been told that our projections look pretty decent ten years out, that we have a good idea of what's going to be happening in ten years. That gives us the opportunity in the ten year mark when the other millage expires to reevaluate those votes from there. And then we said a lot more.
It's, um, as far as pushing, as far as the next board making that decision in ten years. That seems a bit more prudent.
That's, I think you're right. And I think instead of setting up a, a future board, because who knows who will be on the board in ten years from now. It sets them up, I feel in a good position, not having all these random staggered yeard millages, but knowing that we're set up for every ten years that we're coming back and looking at it with twenty year length of millages in case anything were to happen at that point in time.
So if we, if we approve that tonight, do we have to use this exact language? And I guess this is an attorney question, or can we still change some of this language on the, on the millage proposal?
Well, you have until, I think it's May fourteenth, at four P M. to submit to the county. So there's time to revise the language.
Okay.
No, it's May.
So we can approve either the ten or twenty, but that still gives you the flexibility to change the, the ballot language if we want to, because we've got until the May fourteenth.
Correct. I, you have at least one other move, I know.
Okay.
Now and then, so and maybe two.
If we, if we would have two, if we made any changes though, I would preferably like to get it done at the next meeting. That gives us just that little bit of buffer. And then if there is still debate between May or April, we're taken care of.
Do we want to vote tonight on the ten or twenty year and then let the, let Mike and
Put the language in.
Put the language in and then, and then approve it?
Is there, so am I hearing correctly that there is a change to the language that was proposed as well?
Because we have. Could be.
Not by me. Oh, not telling.
There could be. Okay.
I, I did heard of legal counsel and our.
Because we, we have in the packet presented to, the agenda item has two motions, one to approve for ten years, one to approve for twenty years. If there's actual language that you would like to see changed, that's news to me that we would have to address.
We wouldn't have to. I'm just saying, do we have, I just asked our attorney, if, if we needed to, do we have that flexibility? He said yes.
Oh, to come back and amend the millage language that you approved, so.
No, for him to add something to the ballot millage if it.
If we needed.
If we needed to.
Is there something you anticipate?
I can't think of anything. That's what I'm wondering.
No, no, just sometimes the, when, when you use the word, Timmy and I were talking about this, when you say be increased. And I think it's too complex to say, you know, we're, we're getting one point four seven nine nine, we're not increasing, but you know, see what I mean?
Worded right now like it's new and we're increasing and making.
Exactly. Exactly. Is there better wording that makes it maybe clear or, or to the public that this isn't this huge complete one point three seven increase in mills? It's, it's a, it's an incremental amount.
Yeah. Turney Homer, can you address that? Or is that more of a education issue of?
It's a little of both, right? I mean, wording that in a ballot proposal is tricky because you know, tech, technically your, your millage expired in December, right? Was your last levy of twenty three. So that's zero, right? You, you have zero authority to levy that. What you're talking about is levying that plus, right, the twenty seven millage and putting that in ballot language is tricky. So we may have some ideas if the, if the board wants to, you know, put that off and explore it. Like I said, the date is May fourteen at four P M.
I think they'll be able to, the voters will be able to tell if we don't do what we say, then just remember.
Man, there, I certainly think there's going to be an education piece to it either way, right? So I'm not sure. You know, there, there are some ideas I have in, in terms of the language. They're not my favorite, right? Because it gets tricky to draft that way.
So leave it the same.
It's not when you wrote this, right?
Yes. And I, I understand what trustee McDonald's saying with respect to the language. It's just tricky to try and.
Right. Because if you just read it without any education, it does seem like we're throwing another new millage out there.
Yeah, that's my concern. Yeah. And, and like you said, it's an education process. So with that, I, I, I move to, that we approved to adopt the millage resolution for the twenty year term.
And is that motion enough, the way it's worded? Clear enough?
Well, you've got the resolution, right? So it's that motion to adopt the resolution on the twenty year. Right?
Yep.
That is.
Give you a second.
So the motion to adopt the twenty year resolution, then it once you take a vote on that, that'll be sufficient for adopting that resolution.
Okay, thank you. So that was a motion by. Okay, thank you. So that was a motion by Trustee McDonald, supported by Treasurer Corstange to adopt the twenty year resolution. For the proposed fire village language. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Uh, no.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes, Supervisor Les Brunt.
Yes, motion carried, thank you. Next, item zero two nine twenty twenty four, consider approval of Butrick Avenue Shared Use Pathway Bridge Repair. Engineer Thorne, welcome and thank you. I don't know if you can address the insurance, who pays what?
You talked about that last.
I thought you did, but.
Manager Smith might be able to, I am less educated in the insurance world.
So.
There was a little talk last time.
Yeah, so just to address that, so we do not, as a township, go after the actual driver, that's our insurance company's um position, they do that. Um they went, I don't I don't know if they're pursuing any further recourse from the driver or not, but our insurance company covered. Um what's in your package tonight of a little over thirty three thousand dollars. Um the reason we're coming before you tonight, which Eric will talk about. Um is a little bit more than that because we didn't feel that the fix was sufficient um for the sustain, the long term stability of the bridge.
Yeah, so the unfortunate reality is the insurance company bases their settlement with us. On what they consider an in kind repair. Um so we got two quotes, I had actually been only been able to get one quote. Up until our insurance company helped us with another company. Um to get their quote and basically the in kind repair was um. The way this, I'll try to keep it simple, the way the the structure is built is there are support structures. There they were cast in concrete foundations and when the car hit the bridge, it sheared off seven of these supports. And so to replace it, in my engineering opinion, in kind, we would need to remove the existing foundations with the broken supports. And cast new foundations with new supports. Um the in kind repair that the insurance company considered, which is the second quote that we got. Um what they wanted to do was essentially drill a hole in the existing sheared off post within the foundation. Stick a galvanized pipe in there with epoxy and then core a new hole into replacement supports and basically. Shove the new supports with the hole in it over the galvanized pipe on the foundation. Now, not one to say that wouldn't work and maybe it would last five, ten, fifteen years. My fear being why the bridge is there is it's a wetland area, it gets a lot of water. Um just being in Michigan, the freeze thaw component of having now your support post for this bridge. That gets pickup trucks that the building and grounds crew uses on the regular to plow the path with, it gets, it has to support these trucks. And now you have the support post system of epoxy, galvanized pipe and wood, it's it's kind of a hodgepodge of materials, otherwise. There's, they're literally gluing the structure back together. Um so what the alternative quote, the more expensive one that I'm proposing here today does is introduces. Um what I believe was, I think it was eight. Let me check real quick. It was seven, seven helical piers, which are, they're metal driven posts, basically that go up to twenty one feet. In the ground, they are measured, they're pretty much drilled until their torque gauge on the the machine that drills them. Reads a certain bearing capacity. Um and so you know that when those posts are in the ground, that they will support X amount. Of live load, which for the case of this bridge is ten thousand pounds. Um so that is an additional, I believe it was in the realm of eleven grand and some change over. What the insurance company had agreed to settle with us. Um if I had to sign off on something as an engineer, their solution is the one I would sign off on. Again, not to say the alternative, the in kind that the insurance company called, that solution wouldn't work. But it's not a solution that I can point at and say, yes, that can take, you know, X amount of load, which is the ten thousand pounds, which is where we're comfort, it's how the bridge was designed, it's an M dot spec. And it's certainly able to handle the buildings and grounds equipment. And also the company that's willing to do that, it's it's very difficult. Um as somebody who's called around trying to get a contractor is one. It's difficult to get them to do this type of work, a repair job on a municipal bridge. Um right off the side of the county road and two, it's hard to get on a schedule anytime soon. Um so this company that's actually able to do this, the bid that I'm proposing, they are able to start as early as this week and. It would be an up to two week construction process, they would do partial demolition, um they would drill the piers. They would rebuild the bridge during which the entire time it would be closed. Um but again, up to two weeks, it would be back open, functional and like it never happened. Are there any questions?
Um, oh, go ahead. Nope. Okay. We had one resident question is, is it possible? Probably come out of a different fund to work with the county and see if we could protect that bridge a little bit in the future.
Yeah, so my two cents on that would be, we certainly could. I think if if that was desirable, we could work with the county. They would put the, they would put the bill on us to do that. Um I think what we'd run into there though, is that under the road, right at that bridge, there is a give or take twenty four or thirty inch culvert. So it actually, the opening that culvert is right between the bridge and the road, gives you about a eight to ten foot gap. I imagine to stick guardrail, if it is guardrail, which would probably be what you put there. Um you're gonna need enough room on that slope to be able to. Cause it's gotta be able to take the impact of a of a vehicle moving at speed, which I think on that road's probably a design speed of fifty miles an hour. Um you're gonna need that, move that slope back a little bit to have enough room to put the foundations in for that guardrail. You do that, you're moving that, you're adding a couple more sticks of pipe um and that culvert to get it to out further. Um to the new end of the slope. Um you're probably moving the pedestrian bridge, honestly, and then. There's a water main that's right under, right on the side of the road, that west side of the road on Butrick, so you're putting the guardrail. Over a water main, or you might even have to move that slope a little bit more to get away from that water main. Anyway, all that to say, not impossible, but there's certainly, there's a, there's a a hump to get over to make that possible and I think. My two cents, like just to put it out there again, um it's a straight stretch of road. It's been there for since two thousand one, so I think you gotta kind of weigh your rate of, you know, your um your uh. Return on investment there, is it gonna be worth the money to put a guardrail in? To protect the structure that costs us thirty grand to repair or forty grand to repair every twenty three years, I don't. I don't know, if it gets hit again next winter, then yeah, it looks like that's a good answer, but I.
Obviously, you look at, you've looked at the the site.
Uh huh.
And got some ideas. Okay, thank you.
What was the dollar difference between our insurance? I know.
Oh, it was about um eleven thousand and that will be coming out of the pathway fund.
That was my question first.
The deference will be.
Very good.
That was very well explained and it makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I I I move to that we accept the proposal from Archideck as. Approved by our township engineer and approve the use of the pathway fund to repair that Butrick Avenue. Pathway Bridge and also approve the budget amendment eh at the same time.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by Trustee McDonald, as stated, supported by Trustee Shipley, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thank you, Mr. Thorne. Item zero three zero twenty twenty four, consider approval to amend P U D. Land unit development zero two ordinance, second reading. Manager Smith, Planner Hendricks.
I can take it. Um so two weeks ago, you, this was introduced um to the board. This is a P U D that is just adding an allowable use of a child of a daycare center. Um that was not previously permitted. Uh so this is the second reading and adoption of this amendment.
Do we have the applicant here tonight? I can't. Is there anything you want to add from, I know we, the last meeting was really helpful, but. You do now, so you're you're welcome to.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add, no.
Diffер to you, just.
Make a motion to adopt the uh to amend the P U D ordinance to allow the daycare.
Shipley supports.
Okay, that is a motion by Trustee Kessel, supported by Trustee Shipley to approve the proposed amendment to P U D zero two ordinance. Um as recommended in the packet, Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Castle.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes, Supervisor Les Brunt.
Yes, motion carried. Item zero three one twenty twenty four, consider approval of the Thorn Apple River SAD. So Special Assessment District Safety and Navigational Marketing, or excuse me, marking contract. Mister Carpenter. Mentioned this earlier, is there anyone that would like to um provide additional comments? Direction.
I can jump in real quickly. So what you have in your packet tonight shows the the navigational markings. Um there's actually a map in here too, that's the the type of navigational markings that will be put into the river. And then also the map of the location. As Mr. Carpenter alluded to, what you see on the map is more than what's actually going to be installed, that's more than. Was approved by the state. So um with that, this is something that the the Special Assessment District has been working on. So I believe almost since inception, probably before and I'm happy to to help. Um I know Director Mannion is here as well, she's actually been working with Viking Marine. Um if she has more to add. Or not.
The only the fact that they are ready to go, um hopefully if possible, but they will be gone during the summer months. So we can get to them quickly on it and we'll probably have them installed.
Well, I, having lived on that side of the river before and having hit some of those uh stumps. With with my pontoon and other uh boats, um I I totally really appreciated uh. The ad hoc committee's presentation, what Jeff told us, and with that, I I move to approve the contract. The Thorn Apple River Safety and Navigation Marking Plan with Viking Marine Construction as proposed, makes a lot of sense.
It's a motion by Trustee McDonald, supported by Treasurer Corstange. To approve the proposed uh contract for the Thorn Apple River S A D Safety and Navigational Marking. Markings, um all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Last new business item zero three two twenty twenty four, this is uh consider approval of the Village Design Review Committee members. This is part, I'm sorry, excuse me, this is part of the ongoing effort to preserve and enhance Cascade's character specifically regarding. Um creating more of a village area. And the Design Review Committee has been a longstanding committee um. But it has been an unused component, component of our zoning ordinance that we revisited last year. Uh the memo, the appointments that I recommended are in the memo, but there is one typo, um the Z B A Appointment, Zoning Board of of Appeals. Would be member Ralph Moxley. So uh with that changed, remember Moxley is the Z B A appointment um. I would put forth the appointments in my memo.
So just to clarify, Scott Preston, no, and Ralph Moxley instead?
Lou Barrett, no.
Lou Barrett, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No offense, I'm just not sure how he made it in there.
Approve, make a motion to approve the uh Village uh Design Review Committee Members is proposed. With a a change of uh Ralph and his place of Lou.
Support.
Some motion by Trustee Kessel. Supported by Trustee McDonald to approve the appointments to the Village redesign commi- or excuse me, Village Design Review Committee. Um as proposed with the change that member Ralph Moxley from the Z B A would be that appointment, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Having no discussion items this evening, now is the time for public comments, um whether it's on, whether the comment is on. Something that was on tonight's agenda or not. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
My name is Matthew Delang, I'm currently running for the probate judge position that's being opened up by the retirement of Judge Hillary. Who had been a, held that position for a little over twenty years. Um I've been doing nothing but family law for the last sixteen years. Um and in fact, actually, I specialize in international interstate family law, so think when parties live in two different states or two different countries or. Move from one state or one country to here, uh I specialize in that particular area, I present on it to other judges. And to other community members. And in particular, I wanted to go to each of the individual town and uh city uh. Commission meetings just to introduce myself, because this is a a particular type of judge that more of your constituents will likely see than anywhere else, so. When you are looking at particularly like the probate judge assigned to the family court, these are dealing with divorce, abuse neglect cases. Child custody, paternity cases, which are going to be the, probably the biggest area that your constituents, if they have a court case, is going to be in there. Given that you have about a fifty percent overall divorce rate, and that's not including people who have children outside of wetlock. Uh and it's important to have someone there that actually wants to continue doing family law, that hasn't gotten burned out by the process or. Is completely changing areas in their own field. So we've had different people try to apply for this type of judgeship. Who've never done family law in their entire career, trying to run for that. So I just wanted to introduce myself to all of you, so that way you have an idea this fall. Uh who that person is on the backside of your ballot and also uh to answer any questions you guys may have afterwards as well. And also to try to collect signatures to get over the two thousand signatures it takes to get on the ballot for a countywide position, which is. A whole lot of meeting reading, which you guys can appreciate to some extent when you've tried to collect nominating petitions to get on your own individual seats. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming tonight.
Hi there, Scott, it's all going again. Um as I was walking in here in noticing the Friendship Park, which does look very nice. Um just checking out the parking lot. It's just crumbling and I was curious if there's any type of plans to for that. Um I know obviously you guys invested quite a bit of money in the pathways due to lack of maintenance over the decades. And before the stuff gets too bad, keeping up on on maintenance for it. You know, I I had, you know, several years ago, I brought up before expanding more pathways. Maintain the ones that we have, which we are now have, do have a good plan, but you know, we're adding to this new park, we're redoing all the other parks, but the parking lots. Are crumbling, also the pathway, the um drive up near Burton Park. I don't know if anyone's ever walked that or looked at it, it doesn't look like it's ever really been maintained, any type of crack ceiling or top coat on there, it's just crumbling apart. I know originally it was a, I believe Mr. Tassel's a private drive to that that large home back there, but now it is government property, so. Falls on us to maintain it before it crumbles apart. So obviously now there's still some large, you know, seams or holes or potholes there. That can be fixed before it has to just be totally redone, so. So just some preventive maintenance to think about, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smithson.
We proved that in our last meeting.
Any other comments? Anyone virtually? Manager comments.
Um, just a couple. I appreciate the board approving the village language tonight, so we can get working on. Getting that submitted and then getting the education pieces put together. Um as soon as those are ready, we will get those um sent out to both the board members and to the public. Um in regards to the parking lot. That was approved, those repairs were approved at the March twenty seventh meeting, so those will be happening this uh the summer. We're still working. Um and then just uh for everybody to to know as well, we will be taking a bid to the D D A next week. For some major sidewalk repairs along Old Twenty Eighth and Twenty Eighth Street, there's some pretty big trip hazards. That um have been a concern for years, so we're getting those taken care of and asking for the D D A to uh to cover those. Um so you may see some construction going on down there well, as well, but that won't be coming before the board. Um with that, that's all I have tonight.
Board comments.
Okay, first of all, most important, thanks for coming, this is great size crowd. In the past, sometimes we've only had two people here, sometimes one. Well, thanks for coming down, even though perhaps I disagree with you on some occasions, good to see you. A couple things that you ought to know. The sad, Thorn Apple Sad is is. Run by and maintained by a special assessment district. Until I sat on it, I did not realize, we cannot take obstacles out of the way of boats. And haul them away from the river, we have to relocate them, which.
I never knew. Number two, the boys and the markers have to be approved by the federal government, the state government, and finally us, I didn't know that. So those floating. Milk jugs that, thank God, the people have always replaced on a annual basis on the rivers. Those will be gone, and you'll have some bona fide markers there that are maintained. Um. You might have noticed that we approved invoices to be paid tomorrow. Due to the change in the accounting, we used to. Uh, approve those after they were paid, now we're approving them before we pay them. So that's accountability to taxpayer, that's another great. Change in the township that we've seen. And lastly, there are plans, I know everywhere I go, people ask, what about the toughy building, what are you gonna do? Well, part of it is the new committee that has been reappointed, and you'll be seeing more of that in the future. Uh, perhaps if you have any questions as to where the, um. Has the risk material beatment program is, it has to be considered first. The township office is working on that, so. That's all I have, thank you.
Can you have more comments?
I can address Mr. Whitley's, uh, question briefly. Just from the perspective of the new supervisor who's been here a while. Um, most obviously, what is the township itself doing for the Thornapple River? Advocating for the four hundred homes that are, um. Infected by P F O S, the number one thing is standing up to the. The elephant in the room, which is the airport. It's in our township and up to this point, when I came in as supervisor. The Cascade Township shared our law firm with the airport, we shared our P R firm with an airport, we shared our engineering firm with the airport. And the former chief operating officer of the airport, retired, turned airport engineer consultant for a local engineering firm. Sat undisclosed as a member of our planning commission. So it's been like peeling the layers off an onion from at least the position of supervisor, who. On the board of trustees, to get independent and legal counsel engineering firms, a P R firm that actually advocates for residents and for the Thornapple River and for the environment in Cascade Township. Every single step was met with resistance, none of it was agreed upon, resistance at the board level. Um, up until Manager Smith started, the SAD committee couldn't even get accurate accounting of what balance, fund balance it has. That's because the accounting wasn't even done correctly, but to get competent staff. Took what, two years, and was met with resistance at every step of the way, so. Um, we've been working non-stop, and the Thornapple River is part of it, part of our priorities, but just like everything else, um. Everything we've done has been to advocate for residents and for our township, the Thornapple River is on the list, but i- it's, it's. It's like everything else, it's part of, it's maintaining the Cascade community and advocating for residents, the big thing has been P F O S. And also its community engagement, it's getting our parks committee to follow its own bylaws, having speakers who come in. Who advocate for different parts of the river, not just, um. Our section of the Thornapple, and then it's a little tricky in Cascade, as you know, because Thornapple. Sections of the river are unique in that i- it's privately owned waterfront, it's not a, we don't have a big public section. So there's a fine line, you're balancing, you know, protecting people's property rights with advocating for a public resource, so. For people like yourself who are, you know, staunch river advocates, but wanting to maintain that private, private field of a Thornapple. We've been balancing that really delicately, so. I think we've done a lot, at least. We've cleaned up a lot, and we now have competent staff and a board of trustees that actually, um, prioritizes. All of the Cascade, including the river, and, um, mostly its residents, I can go into more details, but.
Grace, can I add on to that?
Mm-hmm.
And Chuck. When we start, talk about strategic goals, preserve, protect, and maintain the Thornapple River and Cascade Dam, that's a very high level, uh, uh, and I think as Grace is trying to point out. Everything the township does, whether it's stormwater retention, stormwater detention, uh, ordinances that we have, building codes.
Stormwater is huge, we were letting, we, that was huge, we gave the airport a free pass, and we just got sued. Because they don't like that they're not getting a free pass anymore, you wanna talk about advocating for the Thornapple River, you're welcome, right there.
One of, the other, one of the things also is, is that the township, for example. We asked and negotiated with and, and won, got the airport, they wanted to take, for example, the, the effluence from the airport, from the de-icing. And pump it directly into the Thornapple River, we stopped that project. That we asked them to spend fifteen million dollars and put in a rear system to fil- filtrate that runoff from the airport, and they agreed to do that. So we stopped the two-year.
I don't think the airport agrees to do anything, they don't agree, out of the kindness of their hearts, no. We actually stood up to them for the first time, and we're protecting the Thornapple and the residents, and you know what else we're doing, Mr. Whitley? It's not just the people who live along the river, all of you residents who didn't realize that you were about to get at least two additional full-on-off ramp expressway ramps in your backyard. Based on this master plan, but they couldn't justify the need to get those, so that's when this old board caved and allowed for. Um, industrial zoning, the change in zoning that would allow for industrial, which then you've got the explosion of growth to then justify the need. Sorry, it becomes a need, right now it's a desire, for those additional direct on and off ramps, so we've been doing nothing but protect Cascade, which includes the Thornapple. And I think the only question is, people would be shocked to know how. How bad the trajectory we were headed in up to this point, we're not done yet, but. We're in a heck of a lot better, uh, position than we were. And we actually have a backbone now, which is helpful, but you guys would have no idea what your backyard would look like, but for the past twenty-four months. And not only that. The A G's office actually stepped up, and they're the ones, we don't, as a township, we control zoning land use, we don't handle health and human safety, hold on. We don't handle health and human safety, we don't handle pollution in the environment, that's a state level. So we're not gonna take, we don't handle that, we stay in our own lane, the attorney general's office is suing the airport right now. Based on the environmental contamination, that's not something we do, so we've done everything we possibly can. And with staying in our lane with zoning and land use to protect the river.
And, and we certainly, you know.
I can't think of what else you want us to do, but most likely we can't do it.
It's not public comments.
One thing, for example.
Not public comments, we can talk about it afterwards, but we're not gonna turn it into a circus, no public comments.
No public comments, okay, I, I, that's fine, I, I, you know, I, I just wanted to say that. Skin of the game might, might have.
But afterwards, Mr. Whitley, thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
It's a motion by clerk Slater, supported by trustee McDonald to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.